Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, I would like for you to bow your head and remember the people we lost in the floods not too long ago and pray for their families that the good Lord might give them patience to deal with the tragedy that they're facing. And also remember the volunteers, the police, and the first-line people that helped in Thank you. And good afternoon again. My name is Sina Nejad. I have the honor of chairing the Planning and Zoning Commission with my good commissioners. And welcome to the meeting today of July 21st, 2025. Please make sure that you silence your phones. And if you're volunteering to speak today, keep your comments to three minutes. And since we have a full house, if you see somebody else mentions the same thing that you're concerned with, maybe we just don't repeat all of it. With that, please call the roll.
Chairman Nejad?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Present.
Commissioner Jabbar? Is absent. Commissioner Javio? Is absent. Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Little?
Here.
Commissioner Macon? Is absent. Commissioner Sinigor?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Dixon? Is absent. Alternate Commissioner Sorrell?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a quorum for the members of the commission. You have been sent the minutes of the last meeting. I would entertain the motion to approve with or without any comments or corrections.
So move.
We have a move to approve the minutes of the last meeting as it was published with a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. With that, we're going to get started with the regular meeting, PZ 2025156.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Access surveyors requested approval of a replat of part of Lot 2, Block 3, Level Farm subdivision into lots 2A, 2B, and 2C, Block 3, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. This property is located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The intent of the plat is to divide the property into two residential lots along an existing private road. Staff recommends approval of the request. We did send 10 property owner notices. We received one in favor and one in opposition. Favor stating, consider only accepting votes of those that have paid property taxes. Opposition stating, I have been maintaining that piece of property for the last seven years. As far as I'm concerned, that property is legally mine. On your screen is the area for review outlined in red. This is an aerial image of that property. And this is the proposed plat. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
An applicant here? Oh, my goodness. How are you? Did you get your license yet or not?
I did. I did.
All right.
Thank you for asking.
So you can't bow and mouth us anymore at this stage?
No, no, I'll be nice.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Colby Bracken. I'm with Access Surveyors. We're located at 11025 Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas. And I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the gentleman? None is heard. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Keith Bailey, and I own the property at the end of the road.
Yes, sir.
And I'm just, the road is my concern. What would happen to the road if they turn? I'm not worried about the property turned into a subdivision, but what about the road?
All right, sir. Any other questions?
Uh, no, that's it.
Fantastic. Did you give us your address for the record?
Yes, I did.
You did? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll, we'll get an answer for you.
All right. Okay.
We'll get one. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? All right, we close the public hearing, and we go back to the gentleman with Access Surveyor. Sir, you had that comment. I would appreciate if you can tell us what your thoughts are.
Thank you. Thank you for the concerns. Track 2C, as shown, now designated as Hunter's Glen Trail. It's the long strip, about 60-foot wide access easement estate is what we're trying to label it now. There is an existing easement heading back towards Mr. Bailey's property. And basically, what we're doing here is designating it as a private road. That way, you know, the easements are going to stay the same, and they're also going to be utilized for Track 2A and Track 2B. So no easements are, are taken away, no rights are forfeited. We're basically designating it as a, as an access easement itself.
So Mr. Bailey would have access at all times?
That is correct.
I have a question.
We're, we're, we've been working with Jefferson County, being as it's in their jurisdiction, along with the city of Beaumont, it's ETJ. So we've been working closely with the county and the city to make sure that everyone, you know, has benefited to the, to an extent. It's not a public road. The easement actually runs through what we're going to consider a private road at this time.
Thank you.
And his easement's not going anywhere. Basically, the 60-foot right-of-way is going to serve all three tracks now.
But he still has a right-of-way through it, but what about maintenance in, on a private road?
So it, basically, his easement's not being interfered on? It'll have to be maintained.
What about maintenance of it? If it's a public right-of-way, then someone's going to maintain it.
Well, the three tracks will have to maintain it, and that would be between the private owners.
The other three tracks have to maintain it.
The, the two existing ones, and then the second existing one, we're splitting into two.
Is there objection to turning it into a public road, other county, city, whatever?
I believe there is. Yes, sir.
I understand what you consider.
I mean, it would just cost a significant amount of money to bring up the existing road to the city's.
I understand, but this man is at your mercy or the owner's mercy to maintain that road.
Does this perpetual access easement, is it already recorded?
It is already recorded.
It is.
It's an access easement. That's not maintenance.
That's right. He, he has an, he has an easement crossing the current landowner's estate.
I understand, I understand.
So, you know, the current landowner couldn't, you know, harm or, or make less the existing access easement.
I understand. It gives him access, but no one, it's up to the owners of the Southern to maintain that right-of-way.
Right. So it's under their, you know, their agreement at this time. It is, they can't harm it. So, you know, it's not, we're not necessarily creating an easement. We're just designating one for all three tracks to use.
But he's not a part of it.
Well, his easement's already there. We can't touch it.
I understand easements, but also understand right-of-ways. I mean, put some maintenance on them.
Yes, sir.
Is there going to be a cover set or a cover set in the area?
No, sir. It, it just runs straight off of Highway 365.
You just butt?
Yes, sir.
I'm missing something here.
Is the, is the road concrete or asphalt?
I believe it's a rock slash dirt road.
Rocks?
Yes, sir.
It doesn't matter now. It makes future. Thank you.
Any other questions for the gentleman? I'm sorry, sir. You had your, your time. Thank you.
I believe what I'm, what I'm saying will clear up all this, and it'll help him understand
I'm sorry. You had your, your time. Thank you.
It'll clear up the answers.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the, the question is, did you get your answer or not?
To a certain extent, and he was concerned about maintenance. I'm the one that's been maintaining that road.
We have to talk about it at the podium, not from the audience, and to maintain the integrity of the, the meeting.
Why don't you come back and, and tell us? Let's do it. I sure as the heck don't want you to go home unhappy.
I understood what Access Surveyors was saying, that it's still going to be a private road, and that was my concern. I have been maintaining that road for the last seven, eight, nine years. Supplying the rock, filling in the potholes. Me and the two lots in front of us has just come to an agreement to redo the road again. As long as it stays private, I don't mind maintaining it.
Well, fantastic. You might even have some, but some people to share in with you.
So that's, I've been doing it. I don't mind doing it. We just want it to stay private.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
If you're happy, I'm happy.
I'm, I'm loving it. I'm loving it. Thank you all.
Whoever's not happy, talk to the city attorney.
Oh, hold on.
We're going to go to, all right. So we heard from the applicant, and we heard from the neighbor. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go ahead and go to.
I would love for you to do a motion with that.
You haven't done the motion, huh?
We did ask for a vote, but didn't ask for a motion, right?
Yeah.
Make a motion, you're private.
All right. Is there a second? All right.
Let's slow down. Let's slow down. There was, Stilletta made a motion to approve. It was seconded by, by Commissioner Javat.
Any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am. No. And you see why I was doing what I was doing, because we got people here that don't let us go full speed, so. PZ 2025157.
Anastasia Cormier of Christ Fellowship Church of Beaumont is requesting the abandonment of the 30-foot unnamed alley to the west of the property located at 2930 Avenue F, north of Washington and south of Terrell. The, I'm sorry, Terrell. The church is hoping to obtain the property from the city of Beaumont in order to expand their building to better serve the community. This item was sent to all interested parties. Planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition being that if approved, the applicant shall obtain an appraisal and title search report for the property to be abandoned at their expense. The appraisal and title search report must be submitted to the planning offices along with proof that payment has been arranged prior to the item being placed on the city council agenda. The area outlined in red is the area under review. That's where they wish to abandon the alleyway. Aerial image. This is the subject property and to the south. Alleyway and to the south. To the north. East. West. And I believe we have the applicant present.
Any questions for the lady? Thank you. Is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, ma'am. Would you please give us your name and address, and if you have any additional information you can give us?
My name is Anastasia Cormier. The address for the church is 2930 Avenue F. I don't live in the city limits. But we're, we've been trying to get the property so that we can expand and build a new building so that we can better serve the community and maybe start some services back there that are not there. Because we were talking about if we can get a big enough building, maybe doing some after school care and things like that. But we need that piece of property. We've been cutting it for the last 20 years because there's, with some confusion, and they thought that it had been abandoned, and it hadn't. So we just started doing the research recently to find out that it had not been abandoned prior.
Okay. Any questions for the lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great. We heard from the staff and also the owner, and I would entertain the motion to approve.
So move for approval with the condition?
Or deny.
Second. Are you going to ask if there's anybody else who wants to speak on it?
Well, there's nothing on my paper that says that they send these to all these people, so that's why I did not ask for that.
It still should be open to the public.
Yeah.
All right. But you can't blame me for it. He's not here.
I get it.
All right.
I get it.
So we open the floor for, it wasn't supposed to turn to a comedy show, folks, but it's going that way. We open the floor for the public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. Now entertain a motion.
So move for approval with the condition.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with the conditions. And a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go to PZ 2025210.
Access surveyors request approval of a replat to a portion of Lot 5, Abstract 11. I'm sorry if I say this wrong. D Show League survey, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas, into lots 1 through 5, Colander's Crossing Edition, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas, containing 3.55 acres, more or less. This property is located within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The intent of the plat is to divide one large track into five residential lots. Staff comment, or staff recommends approval of the request, and I would like to add the condition to re, one condition to read. The plat shall note the record number of the perpetual access easement on the plat prior to final recordation. Staff sent 13 property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area under review. Here's an aerial image. And this is the plat. And again, this is one of those situations. This is an existing private road.
All right. Would you repeat that condition one more time, please?
The plat shall note the record number of the perpetual access easement on the plat prior to final recordation.
The applicant?
Good afternoon again. Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors, 11025 Old Both Road here in Beaumont, Texas.
Mr. Bracken, do you agree with the condition that the staff has put on the?
I would agree with the condition if we could find that easement. We wanted to make sure that there is an easement per this plat. We were unable to locate an easement for that driveway on the south end of the, the portion, on the south end of this minor plat. We want to make sure that there is one, being as there's a driveway crossing it, which would be granted towards the apparent home or property that's using that driveway.
Well, it shows on your survey, but you don't have any documentation for it, right?
Correct. It's per this plat, which we're creating one at this time.
So, let me, well.
Let me make sure. Engineering believe that they're here, if that is acceptable. I think Molly just walked in. So on this plat to the south, there is a existing private road. They don't have a perpetual access agreement already filed. In my opinion, they need to have that on record before we do a final recordation of the plat. I would think that they would need to create one and file one, and then have that on there, or they can do it per the plat.
That's correct. Either way, that the instrument ties that easement directly to the property, and it's not, and it stays with that property as opposed to an agreement.
Molly, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sorry. Molly Villarreal, 801 Main Street. My position is Public Works Director for the city of Beaumont.
Fantastic. Okay. Is that going to solve your issue?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And for whoever's making the motion, they need to state the, the condition as it was stated. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant, and there is a condition. And the city Public Works Manager is agreeing with it, and I entertain a motion.
I move we approve as per motion.
And the condition?
Condition.
Second.
We have a motion and an approval. Second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say.
All right.
You okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. At this point, we're going to start our joint meeting with the city council, and the Honorable Mayor West is going to get us started. Mayor West. I hope you have better luck than I did.
If I may roll call, please.
Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Here.
Councilmember Durio is absent. Councilmember Hilliard?
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, everyone. This is a joint meeting with the quorums of both city council and the planning and zoning. And today, the items we're discussing, this will be the only opportunity to speak on them. We won't be speaking again at the council meeting. The items will be heard at the next available agenda for a decision on these items. And I don't believe I have anything else, so I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, and welcome. We're going to get started with PZ 2025126, please.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Before I get into this planning case, I would like to provide information on what exactly a planned unit development is. So a planned unit development, or a PUD, is a zoning district that supports an approved comprehensive development plan to encourage unified design and mixed land use, such as residential, commercial, retail, professional offices, and institutional facilities. By approving a rezone to a planned unit development, or a PUD, it will allow greater flexibility to buildings, lot sizes, common shared spaces, and a public amenities, which would support the greater goal of a master planned community. So the required steps to designate a PUD is to first receive approval for a rezone from the existing zoning district to a planned unit development, which is reviewed by the planning commission and affirmed, and then affirmed or denied by the city council. The second step is to receive an approved specific use permit for the land use and density plan, which follows the same requirements as the rezone application. You can go to the next one. For this case, Sam Jaeger III is requesting a rezoning for approximately 366 acres located at the southwest corner of Dallin Road and Delaware Street to go from residential single family, residential multifamily, and agricultural residential districts to a planned unit development, or a PUD, to support a high-quality master planned development. It should be noted that before any development of this site occurs, a specific use permit must be approved and established, to establish the land use and density plan. And what that means is the development plan of the site. At this time, Mr. Jaeger is only seeking approval for the rezone, so he is in step one of the phases we just discussed. For him to break ground, of course, he has to, to receive an approved specific use permit. Planning staff does recommend approval of this rezone request. We did send out 249 property owner notices and received 200 in favor and 10 in opposition. Favor states that this will be, I'm sorry, two, two in favor, not 200. I apologize. We received two in favor and 10 in opposition. Favor states this will be a new concept for Beaumont, and they wish success to the developer. Opposition states concern of drainage, impact to deer, negative impact to surrounding neighborhoods, traffic, noise, issues with no description of what will be built, does not want apartments, and it was stated it's ludicrous, it's a ludicrous proposal, and anyone going along with this arbitrary inappropriate request should be voted out of office and is not fit to be a resident of Beaumont. At this time, we do have Mr. Jaeger present, and if commission's okay with it, he did prepare a short presentation of the master planned communities he's done in other parts of Texas, which are areas such, or such as areas within the woodlands. But today, the area outlined, you can go back to the one before. The area outlined in red is the area under review. So you can see those different colors within the red outline, which is green, yellow, and then you can see a bit of orange along Dallin Road. Orange is what allows apartments there by right currently. That's how the current zoning stands. So what he's wanting to do is change all of that into a planned unit development, which means it'll be a, you can see to the north, there's that brown color. That means that all of that zoning district will now be that brown color. And again, what that is to, what, what the purpose of it is for a master planned community. So on the next screen, this is an aerial image. This is by the HEB. You can see Delaware to the north, Dallin on the east, and to the south is Gladys. And then next. And then this is a zoning map, or a map that Mr. Jaeger provided us. You can go to the next. This is the subject property. Again, this is a huge track, so the aerial image is probably the best view of the track. And then we do have a short presentation if commission and council are willing to hear from Mr. Jaeger, who is the applicant. Again, if you guys are willing, it's a very short presentation.
Well, I think by the number of people present here, it might not be bad to, to, to go ahead and look at that presentation. All right. So is that it on your side? Mr. Jaeger? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, and then we'd love to hear from you.
Great. My name is Sam Jaeger III. I'm president of Acadia Dallin LLC, which is the property owner and applicant in this case. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today and discuss this property. I know it's a, a subject of great interest. I've answered a lot of questions over the past couple of months from residents, and I know there's a lot of concern over this particular project. And what I want to say today is that this is the first step in a multi-step process, and we are here to change the zoning and then proceed next with planning. And there'll be another opportunity for everybody to review the plan and discuss the plan at a later date. So as part of that, what we want to talk about a little bit today is the benefits of a planned unit development to create a master planned community, or an MPC. MPCs offers numerous benefits, which include strong creative identity with consistent place-making, curated architectural style with an ongoing deed restriction and architectural guideline enforcement for all uses, a variety of housing options with a convenient, walkable, and integrated mixed uses connected by amenities, diverse amenities such as decorative signage, landscaping, trails, lakes, recreation centers, parks, and shared spaces, a more well-rounded, community-oriented living experience with a sense of belonging, higher, more stable and resilient property values supported by the scale and benefits and scope of the MPC. So when I talk about MPCs, you know, what am I really talking about? And as Ms. Inman mentioned, I brought some of the projects that we've done previously. So here's an example of one of our projects called Harper's Reserve. This is located just east of the woodlands in Montgomery County, Texas. And you can see the residential and the lakes and the amenities and trails and landscaping, and the commercial and the residential and the schools that are all constructed in this. Next slide, please. So just to give you an idea of scale of this project, it's a Gulf Coast architectural style, so it has its own style that's associated with the project. There was 2,160 homes that were constructed in the project, 76 mixed-use acres, 880 total acres, $850 million in assessed value. There were two recreation centers in that project, lakes, a trail system, and 160-acre nature preservation area. The website is at the bottom of that page in case any of the residents would like to look online. We do have more information online about that project. Next slide, please. Here's some pictures of the recreation facilities, the entry, and some of the lakes and trails. Next slide, please. Another project we've, we are currently working on is called Audubon. It's at the intersection of 242 and FM 1488 in Montgomery County. It's a transitional architectural style, and it's supposed to include about 5,000 homes, 550 mixed-use acres. It's 3,000 total acres. There's $3 billion of projected tax value buildout. There's a 706-acre park system, which will include multiple parks, lakes, and trails, and two recreation centers. Next slide, please. So here's some images from that project, so you can see sort of how those things are brought to life in the project. Next slide, please. So our last presentation of another project we're working on, we're about halfway through this one, called Fulcher Lakes. It's in Fort Bend County. It's mountain prairie transitional style. It has 1,615 homes planned, 62 mixed-use acres, including the school you see in the background, 629 total acres, $880 million of assessed value, full buildout. It has four lakes, interconnecting trails, two parks, and a future recreation center that's about to go out for bid called Travis Park. And you can see on the bottom there, that's the website for Fulcher Lakes, in case anybody wants to take a look at that online. Next slide, please. These are pictures of the retail and restaurant area that are planned, the school you can see over on the right, our recreation center at Travis Park, and our parks, lakes, and trail system here. So we've also provided some additional information to the city in the form of a short video that we have published on our website that is in the words from our residents in our Harper's Reserve project. You're welcome. I know there's a lot of people and a lot of things to get to today, a lot of business, but it is available on our website. We also have one on our Audubon website. We encourage all the residents and anybody else who would like to see it to really go online and look at it. We're proud of our communities. Our goal here is to get through the first step. We are also working on drainage with the Jefferson County Drainage District. There's detention facilities and drainage facilities that run through this property. There are existing agreements to expand those facilities, and the Drainage District has asked us to work with them to expand them even further. And we are continuing to work through that process, and you're welcome to talk to the Drainage District as well about that. Happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Any questions for the gentleman?
I'm looking at your, your examples that you do have, and I'm assuming that, and the property that you're looking at, how close are they going to be to those examples?
Well, each of these are unique. They're different because they're in different markets and different locations. This will also be unique, but the plan is for this to be a thematic community. This one is 365 acres, so as, it's on the smaller end of the spectrum. So there will be mixed uses, there will be amenities. That is the plan for this site. And part of the reason we have to go through this process is we need to develop a plan that's going to be consistent with all these zoning uses that are around us, as well as with this detention system that we're going to work with the Drainage District for. So how we extend that amenity system through the middle using that drainage system will sort of help us determine, you know, how that land plan is put together. But we also need to know what uses we can work through, and that's why we've come to you today. So there will be elements of this that will get into this project. We're just not at a point where I can say, okay, this is what this is, sort of like your other applicants on Platts, where they say, well, this is the configuration of the land, and, you know, it's yet to be determined what the house is going to look like and those things. We'll have to come back to city council and make a presentation on land use, and I imagine we'll have more details at that time. But we, we don't want to give details that aren't correct or that haven't been developed at this point.
Okay. Impossible to change later. Okay. So, no, that's it.
Any other questions? Mr. Jaeger, you've shown some apartments in some of those pictures. Are you, I know this is not what we're doing today.
Understood.
But are you having any plans of having any apartments in here or any subsidized housing?
We don't have any plans right now for uses because we just haven't gotten to the point of planning uses. But I would just say that anything that we did, would do would be of high quality, like we're demonstrating here. And we're proud of the projects that we put forth, and we don't want to get out in front. I don't want to also say anything that is not absolutely true because we just do not have a land plan yet or a plan to present. When we do that, we will have to go through the planning group again, and we will have to go through city council, and we plan to do that. And we're happy to answer all the detailed questions at that time.
One other question. Have you had a chance to visit with the neighbors?
I have visited with some of the neighbors. I visited with some today. I've visited some with, by phone that actually phoned me after they received notices. So I've answered all the calls that have come to me, and I'm happy to visit with the neighbors after this meeting. If they'd like to visit, I brought some additional materials that they might be interested in, but I'm always happy to listen to any, any comments or questions from the public.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to open the floor for public comments. Is there anybody interested in, in having comments? We'd be happy to hear from you. Please remember that you have three minutes, and just raise your hand, and we get started. Mr. Parigi, of course, you had to be the first one.
My name is Sam Parigi, and my office is at 445 North Fort T Street. We are the two people, or my cup, dear, my people voted for it because we think this is something new to Beaumont, and we think it can't do anything but give our citizens of Beaumont an alternative to where they want to live. They don't have to come to Montclair, where we just added 12 lots. They don't have to come to Belchase, where we added 24 lots. They can go, go somewhere else where they want to go and give them an opportunity. Now, they might pay a little bit more, but I, I think it's great. And it didn't get a cost to the city of Beaumont, I don't think a dime. So I'm about it. I'm all in favor of it, even though it's going to help our property across the street where HEB was and all that vacant land down Delaware. We still own some, and it can't do anything but help us. So we're, we are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parigi. It's good to see you. The gentleman in the front, good afternoon, sir.
My name is Michael Coleman, 6485 Wellington Place.
Mr. Coleman, go ahead, please.
Okay.
Would you set the clock for him again, please? Go ahead.
Basically, I'll have to say I'm in favor of this. However, I have some concerns. On traffic, our mailbox on Wellington Place has to be replaced about every five years now because it gets smashed to pieces. The poles out, on the curve out there are replaced annually. So basically, as we, in general, look at the traffic, it just has to be put in consideration. And as you talk about the drainage, I would like the plan as, as the, as the, as the planning is considered in the drainage, to take into account the drainage in the neighborhoods as well as the, just the drainage inside the plot. It needs to incorporate Wellington, Wellington Place, and the other neighborhoods directly associated. When the last little subdivision was put in next to Wellington Place, that wasn't taken into account, and it really had a lot of Wellington Place problems. And the deer need to be handled in a very careful manner with the game commission. There's a lot of them in there, and they need to be handled carefully, or there will be lots of problems for the developer. So that's really all I have. So if all these things are handled carefully, I think it'll be successful, and I wish these people well. So thank you.
Good to hear from you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Robert Nix, 1605 Hyde Court in Beaumont. No description of a planned project has been provided, thus making it impossible for anyone to favor this request, as the options within the definition of a PUD are vague and absent concerning this proposed project. Basically, the process is in reverse. If you'll notice, the city of Beaumont is going to a lot of trouble to explain what is going to be in an upcoming bond election. There's a reason for that. People want to know what they're voting on and what they're approving. You're asking basically the public in the city council to approve something that they don't know what's, excuse me, that they don't know what's coming. The traffic on Delaware, Dallin, and Gladys are already terrible. It's difficult to maneuver on those three areas, and now we're asking to add additional traffic. That's going to be a problem. How many of you have been by HEB recently? To look at the parking lot, to look at the traffic around it is pretty bad. Dallin, the same way. We had trouble getting out of the addition today to come to this meeting, and this is during the summer. When school is in, Marshall Middle School traffic backs up past our intersection. What you're asking basically to do is to approve something that you don't know what will be. The city has no plans to address the traffic once, once approval is obtained. And so basically, there's nothing in a bond issue for it. That's the other end of Dallin. And so basically, what we're doing is you're saying, let's approve it now, and we'll deal with the problems later without a plan. That's not a good planning process. You need to know what's coming so that you can anticipate the problems that'll be associated with it and develop a plan to address those problems. So we have the process reversed as to what it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case?
I'd love to speak for it.
Go ahead.
You don't have to say that.
May we have your name and address, please?
Michael Gatz, 7950 Phelan Boulevard. You know, when I go to other cities, when I go to other cities and see how nice some of them are, I wonder why we can't have some of those nice things in Beaumont. This is one of those nice things that you see in other cities that we need in Beaumont. We have over 300 acres right now that is primarily zoned agricultural. That doesn't generate a lot of property tax revenue. What Mr. Jaeger is trying to do is build nice homes and put in commercial development along Delaware and Dallin. The previous speaker talked about, well, we don't know what he's going to do. Neither does he right now. He knows what he's done in the past, but you have to get this zoning changed before he can get into the nuts and bolts of actually doing this project. And then it comes back before planning and zoning and to the city council. This process is not reversed. This is the first step, as Mr. Jaeger said, of a multi-step process. You get this zoning change done, then he gets to work and starts drawing everything up, and then it will be presented again with the request for specific use permits. And then everybody gets a chance to come back out and voice their concerns, their approval, their disapproval, whatever. But this process starts here today with the zoning change. Now, we can just leave it just as a green belt forever. We can do that, and the deer will be grateful for that, I'm sure. But folks, every part of the West End used to look just like that. Dallin West used to look just like that. The deer will be fine. They will naturally migrate to other parts of Jefferson County that are more rural. Give us a chance to progress as a city. Give us the opportunity to do something nice for the citizens of Beaumont. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatz. Anybody else that would like to speak for? Oh, yes. Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you? Now that you're all signed up and legal, we, we can hear from you.
I'm just trying to just...
Please.
The board of directors.
Why, why don't you come up here and introduce yourself, and then we'll listen to you.
I have been a...
If you please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Gwen Odom. I have been in Beaumont since I married in 1963 to my husband, who just passed away. So I'm in grief, but I'm very happy to say that my children were raised in Dallin, on Dallin West Side. I gave them wonderful educations, both in what we have as school systems here and the Catholic school as well. And I am so happy that I was able to live long enough to buy a lovely home in Windsor Park. When we moved into Windsor Park, it was a love, it was about 25 years ago, and we had the most wonderful, very rigid HOA. We had very rigid guidelines, and most of those people have moved on. Either they passed away, one was our congressman, he was my neighbor, his wife, Jaya Brooks, you might remember. We had the most fabulous neighbors and the fabulous board of directors. We were very intent about certain things that went on. One of those, I took the minutes, by the way, and sent out all the, all of that type of information, so that's why I'm so stored. But what happened, one of the most important things about the, the entering of our addition is it says, "No outlet." By that, it meant the fire truck can't get in to put out the fire. Now, if we have this big thing going on that you have no idea about what you're doing and what you're going to sell us or, or make us comfortable with, we have families now with very, very young children. It's changed a lot. Many of our, are many, many of our streets now have moved on to what we call a younger generation. These kids walk to school, which is right there around the corner. Right, we're, we're just too, I mean, we are literally in the backyard of the library. That's our turn-in. Next to it, you have Rogers Park. They can go play. The moms love it. They push the doggy, and they push the baby carriage, and there's Rogers Park. Now, one problem we do have, the poor little United States parcel trying to get to our mailbox at about 3:30.
Forgive me, Mrs. Odom, your, your three minutes is over, and I'll make, I'll make a motion to give the lady another minute.
I'm just making a point.
If you stop for one second.
I'm just trying to give a...
Make a motion to give the lady another minute.
We're blocked in. We're blocked in.
Do it.
No, I'm just saying, we're blocked in. And also, I had to call and have them, we have an oil well thing that we had to deal with, and I had to have all that put out, fumes in my house and everything. So we, the man is going to eventually have to stand here and answer, how will you handle all of that? But mostly, it's about inlet-outlet. We can't have obstructions into the entrance and to be able to get in and out of our little small community.
Thank you, ma'am.
That is the biggest thing on the agenda for me is, what if we had a fire? Anybody had a fire? Behind the gate is addition, it's smaller than mine, but you still have to remember, that was one of the bigger issues at all of our board meetings, was safety.
Perfect. Thank you very much, ma'am. Have a great day. Is there anybody else that would like? Mr. Monroe.
Two.
Good afternoon, sir. Haven't seen you in a million years.
The first thing I want to make comment about is, I know...
Would you, would you?
State my name and address.
Unlock the rest of them.
You called me Mr. Monroe, I figured I was in.
Yeah, but, but, but the recording doesn't know that.
My name is Bill Monroe. I live at 6820 Windsor Parkway.
Believe it or not, we even asked Sam Parigi for his name and address.
Yeah, that, that's true.
All right, go ahead.
So, and the comment I'd like to make, number one, is there were a bunch of good people down here last month, and they were down here, and they were wet out there, and all of a sudden, we turn around and the planning, zoning folks were nice enough to come down and say, it's not going to happen. And the reason it wasn't going to happen is because we didn't have enough city council members here. And I... And I contacted one person in that group who reminded me to remind them, even on rainy days, we work in Beaumont. And I think that's about the best way to put it. So you had some citizens down here who weren't too happy about folks not showing up. Number two is, on Mr. Jaeger and this project, I live right on the border of it. And I think they really are gonna do a great job with this thing, and we still have the ability as a community in Windsor Parkway, if something comes up, an apartment complex, Section Eight housing, anything like that, I just want to make sure I understand this right, that we can come back before this commission and protest that. And is the understanding correct there?
You understood that correctly, sir.
Okay, so now I've got a minute and thirty-seven seconds left, and I'm out of here.
There was a lady over there. Thank you, ma'am. I think so. Good afternoon.
Hi.
Would state your name and address for the record, please?
Christina Loke, fifty-sixty E-Hart. I'm on the other side of Bill Chase. I'm also the Economic Development Manager for the City of Beaumont. And for many people, they may not know, but economic development is a new department that the city and council has instilled to allow for development projects like this one. And if there was a way for economic development to check on a project, it would definitely be a project like this. I just want to take a moment to emphasize the importance of thoughtful development, especially in a prime location like this one in Beaumont. This project represents exactly the type of growth that we need, a master-planned community that brings quality housing, amenities, and long-term value. Beaumont hasn't seen anything on this scale before, and it's an exciting opportunity to set a new standard for how we grow and plan our future. I personally have met Sam Jaeger. I went to several of the properties that he even showed himself, and they are incredible units, incredible planned unit developments that I have seen firsthand. And for Beaumont to have an opportunity to experience something like that is not just a step forward, but it's a step towards growth and development. And we have to understand the difference between developed and underdeveloped land and the amount of appraised value that helps not only the city, but the county, and more importantly, BISD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We're gonna close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant, also the staff, and a number of the neighbors and the... With that, I am gonna ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion in the matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Jaeger. We'll look forward to seeing you again. Okay. Let's go to PZ two zero two five one four zero.
Yes, sir.
Let's wait a minute for the folks that came for this case. Maybe they wanna go home.
Were they for or against?
I think they just didn't know what it was. That old lady wouldn't stop.
Didn't work.
All right. We're back in the session here. We're gonna get started with PZ two zero two five one four zero.
Yes, sir. Ali Hamdan requests a rezon for the half-acre property at thirty-seven oh nine Concord Road from residential single-family to GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district, or a more restrictive zoning district. The applicant submitted for a certificate of occupancy, which allows, to allow a tire shop at that location. Due to the current zoning being designated as residential, the CO was denied as a tire shop and not permitted within the residential district. If approved, this request could result in spot zoning by introducing a higher-density commercial use into a predominantly single-family residential area of Concord Avenue. Approval of this request may violate Chapter two eleven of the Texas Local Government Code. As such, planning staff recommends denial of this request. Staff sent eighteen property owner notices, and we received zero in favor, one in opposition. Opposition expressed concerns with commercial uses near single-family homes and crime within the neighborhood. The area outlined in red is the area under review. As you can see, all surrounding around it is yellow, which is residential, single-family. That's the zoning district there. They're requesting to turn it to that purple color, which is commercial, right there. Next slide. This is the aerial image. And this is the subject property. It used to be a florist shop. Now they're wanting to turn it to a tire shop if the rezon is approved. This is to the west, to the east, and to the north. And I believe, I do not believe the applicant is here unless they showed up after the meeting started.
Is Mr. Hamdan here?
He must have left.
Anybody representing him? All right. Any questions for Demi?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
I'm thinking this revolves back to, I think, months back. We had the same issue, and it was a legal issue of spot zoning, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There was a similar case. It was for a landscaping business, and it was, they wanted to rezon one special lot to accommodate one use in a single-family area, and that could violate Chapter two eleven.
That's right. Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the staff. The applicant is not present. The staff has recommended denial, and I would entertain a motion.
Move for denial. Second.
We have a motion to deny, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you, Demi. Go to PZ two zero two five one six seven.
Yes, sir. Carlton Sharp is requesting a rezoning for approximately one hundred and twelve acres, more or less, located north and east of seventy-seven twenty Pelbig Road from residential, single-family, and agricultural residential to a planned unit development to support a high-quality development. The PUD District promotes coordinated design of mixed-use residential, commercial, office, retail, and institutional uses under a comprehensive development plan. It offers greater design flexibility compared to traditional zoning districts, including options for cluster housing, appealing to residents seeking larger homes with smaller private yards, shared open spaces, and public amenities. Drainage District Six has noted that there are several significant drainage features, all traverse the site and serve as a critical outfall route for the area. So that's just something to be considered when they're developing. Again, before any development of this site occurs, a specific use permit must be approved to establish the land use and density plan, much like the one that we just heard or the case before that we heard. Planning staff does recommend approval of this request. We sent forty-seven property owner notices, and we received zero in favor and nine in opposition. Opposition expressing concerns of traffic and lack of turning lanes. Additionally, the landowners in opposition make up seventy percent of the surrounding land within the two-hundred-foot property notice, property owner notice area. And so what that means is that in order for this case to pass, it would need a supermajority vote from council to pass or to be approved for a rezoning request. The area outlined in red is the area they're requesting the rezon for. This is the aerial image. You can see it's undeveloped. This is the subject property. Again, the aerial image is probably the best one to see surrounding uses, given how large the lot is. And the next slide is a map of the opposition that we did receive. So the area outlined, or the area shaded in orange, is making up seventy percent of that area. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
Good. Any questions for Demi? Thank you. And the applicant? Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Carlton and Brian Sharp, fifty-one fifty Plant Road. We're here for this legacy crossing development to provide stable, attainable homeownership for those in the North End of Beaumont. We believe that this would spur homeownership in that area. Also, we believe that also it will serve as attracting tenants in the area in this underutilized property.
And this is basically a rezoning, just like the other...
Just like the other.
Yes, sir. Any development would require the specific use permit prior to breaking land.
Perfect. And Mr. Sharp, these are gonna be all single-family homes?
It's gotta be a mixture of, of...
Right now?
Yes, until we get it with our engineer. We just here for the rezoning today.
And the mixture is just, throw something at me. What does the mixture mean?
You have single-family dwellings, you have senior living, you have apartments, also commercial properties.
Okay. Are they gonna be subsidized?
It's possible.
All right. Any other questions?
Have you had a chance to talk to any of the people that are in opposition of your development?
No, it's actually behind the property, so we haven't talked to them because we haven't talked to them, no.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna open the floor for audience participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. And we heard from the staff and also the applicant, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion. We go ahead. We have a motion to approve.
Yes, second.
You have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Good luck, sir. Now, we're gonna go to PZ two zero two five one seven three.
Concord Mini Storage received an approved rezoning and specific use permit in March of two thousand twenty-two to allow a construction of one hundred and ninety self-serve personal storage units at sixty-thirty and sixty-forty Concord Road. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the existing specific use permit to reduce the perimeter landscaping requirements along the northern and eastern property lines as conditioned in the original approval. The ordinances require an eight-foot-tall wood or masonry fence with a ten-foot-wide buffer, including trees every ten feet. The applicant wishes to eliminate the requirement of the ten-foot-wide tree buffer along the northern and eastern property lines, but remains committed to installing and maintaining an eight-foot-tall wood fence. Our landscaping ordinances allow for the property owner to request this reduction to the perimeter landscaping through the specific use permit process, which is why this case is before you. The planning staff has reviewed this proposal and recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one being, they shall submit a revised landscaping plan to the planning office. Number two, shall install and maintain the required eight-foot-tall wood or masonry fence and eliminate the requirement to install trees and shrubs along the northern and eastern property lines. Number three, shall install landscaping along the front property line to screen the development from the right-of-way, screen the parking from the right-of-way. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program. And number five, maintain or replace the sidewalk along Concord Road. Staff sent eleven property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition of this request. The area outlined in red is the area under review. To the north, along that property line that abuts the yellow color, that is where they're wanting to eliminate the tree or the ten-foot-wide perimeter landscaping buffer, and also to the east, which is along the orange color on the map as well. Next. This is the aerial image. Subject property, to the west, to the east, to the south, and to the north. And I do believe we have the property owner present. I'm sorry, the applicant present.
Demi, was the landscaping as a part of the original documents?
So it's, this is still in its construction phase. It's not CO'd out. But yes, landscaping was included on the original. It was included as a condition on the original SUP, which is why they need to get this amendment today. And also on the approved building plans.
Allowing them to not just have the trees or no landscaping?
They requested, so they came to planning, and they asked to eliminate the tree requirement. We can't make that at an administrative level, but we can bring it to a planning commission. It was, one of the issues I could foresee is to the north, that is residential. That's a residential zoning district off Garner Road.
Right.
Now, there's no homes or anything. It's backyard. That abuts that. One of the issues that I did bring up is that we need to keep the eight-foot wood fence so that there is a screening there. However, we didn't receive any opposition to their amendment, so... The only thing that I...
No trees, but is there other landscaping or not?
No, not to the north or to the east. Along the front, there is that six-foot-wide landscaping buffer. That's required.
Thank you. And you are the applicant, I assume, sir?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, you guys. I sound, I feel insignificant after hearing some of these other...
Name and address, please, for the record.
David Owens. My office address, six hundred Marina, which is our training grounds on Dusta Rescue out there. And the reason we're here, yes, we had a contract initially, because as stated earlier, it started off in two thousand twenty-two, when we tried to get this thing going, and it was just obstacle after obstacle. I grew up in the North End, so we wanted to build a mini storage. There's none out there. So I said, "Man, I wanna..." That's where we picked, we wanted to do it. We had a gentleman come in. We're our third contractor. They keep going bankrupt and all the things going on in the world. But the first guy came in, met with the city, and covered all these things. And the only thing I'd asked as one of the owners was that we have a security fencing, because it's a high-traffic area right there on Concord, you know, so we could put, you know, whatever protection we can to keep folks out of it if need be. They had no idea, and he wound up, spent all the money. He left the country. So he's gone. So we picked back up, got it going again. As you can see in the pictures, we've now completed the building. Waiting to do electrical and all that. I've got everybody ready, but I'm waiting to get some type of security up before I put air conditioning units and all that. That's when I got into and found the trees and shrubbery and all that. The privacy fence, I fully get it, and it's an aesthetic as well, so we want to do that. But the situation is, we, when I asked about why the recommendation for, or the, for the trees and everything, they said, "Well, they want kind of a buffer for sound between commercial and residential." And I understand that, but if you look at the pictures, even one that's up right now, these buildings go full-length, so it's gonna create several obstacles. One is, how do we maintain the aesthetics and bushes and trees and everything in an area that's gonna be totally cut off from the front, back, sides, and it's got a building running all the way down, also across the back that runs full-length? So that was, then I was told whether it could have been amendment done, but obviously, I think one of the young ladies said, "I should have done it three years ago." We just, we weren't aware of that at the time, so that's on me. But that's where we're at today, so it would, it's not just a cost savings. It's more so of, we're out there going, "How are we gonna maintain this?" And it's literally isolated between a metal building length of property and a privacy fence that's enclosed. Maintaining it and trying to control the growth of the trees. Personally, in Southeast, I've been here my whole life. I really don't want trees within ten feet of, especially a metal building like a storage unit. So that's the reason for, we're here to ask. We do want to do the privacy fence, the side and the back. And we got Monica Brothers on the other side of us, but...
But the five conditions, you understand all the five conditions?
Yes, sir. And I, I'd have to ask a review of them. Most of them have already been done.
Yeah, mo- those conditions follow through from the original specific use permit. Those are what were currently in place. We just removed the, in constrict compliance with the landscaping.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant and also the city of staff. And the applicant does understand the conditions that are in the original guidelines. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go to PZ two zero two five one seven eight.
Ray Woodside requests approval of a rezoning from RMH, which is Residential Multifamily Highest Density, to LI Light Industrial Zoning District for the property located at five seven seven five Erie Street. The purpose of the rezoning is to establish a truck parking and storage facility for a motor carrier company currently operating six semi trucks and trailers. The property was originally zoned as light industrial when Cardinal Drive was constructed. However, in nineteen ninety-nine, in an attempt to sell the property, the owner initiated a rezoning to multifamily to allow residential development. That development never took place, and the industrial uses within this area have continued to expand by right. According to our comprehensive plan, the property is located within a light industrial area, and the rezoning appears to align with said plan. As such, planning staff recommends approval of the request. We did send eight property owners, and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area they wish to rezone back to light industrial. Aerial image. Subject property. The north, properties to the south, and to the west. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
Mr. Woodside, good afternoon, sir. How are you today? If you please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ray Woodside, fifty-four eighty Washington.
Thank you. Do you have any additional information you'd like to give us, sir?
No, sir. No more, no more information.
Fantastic. Any questions for the gentleman? As easy as it could be, right?
Love it.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? All right. Folks in the back, one at a time. Unless you're two together. You decided you are together.
Well, we're, we're neighbors, sir. My name is Robert Sales. The address is fifty-seven fifty-five Erie Street. So we're right to the left of that, that property. Our home wasn't shown, but that, that's our house right, property right. Yeah, so the house right there, that, that's our property. So I, I'm speaking on behalf of my dad. You know, he's, he's an eighty-year-old resident, you know, we have, you know, he has grandkids. And we're, we're concerned about a couple of things. You know, first, the, the safety, you know, what's it going to do to, to, to his property taxes, just the quality of life, the overall. You know, right now it's quiet, it's peaceful. There are a couple of industrial businesses that are there. But this is going to be within right next door, and his home is right there in the front. So we're, we're concerned about that, the traffic, the road safety, you know, we have kids, he has grandkids. You know, i- is it going to be a twenty-four-hour business? How, how are they operating? How's it going to affect the taxes? What, what about the environmental issues, the bayous right there? You know, so we just, we just want to make sure. We, we're really opposed to this. We, we don't want any more industrial properties. I know it was rezoned. Unfortunately, it didn't take off the way they, they thought with residential. But, you know, this is going to put us in a really, you know, precarious situation with, with the noise. It's just going to be continuously noisy. And, and we would really like, you know, to keep it a- as, as residential as possible.
All right, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And you, sir, good afternoon, if you would state your name and address.
Willie Coleman, five seven six five Erie Street, and that's my house right next door.
Yes, sir.
And I have the same concerns. It'll be, what, twenty-four-hour noise? You have truck storage. Are they going to be broke, leaking oil, gas? And two houses down, I have a neighbor with a special needs kid. I didn't put my privacy fence back up together in the back because she's always coming over. And I caught her one day trying to jump the fence, so my wife had me take the back down so she got easy access. You know, so she doesn't get hurt because she go jump on the boat, the four-wheel or whatever. And if something like that was to come, is she going to be trying to get over there being curious, you know, being artistic, you know? You know, she's curious. She wants to know. And we like to keep it residential. We, we don't want any industrial business there.
All right, sir. Thank you.
All righty.
Anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? All right, we close the public hearing. Mr. Woodside. We have some negative comments. I'd like for you to respond to those. You gotta go all the way around. You just don't like to pass by the mayor?
So, um.
So let's, let's do this organized. What about traffic?
All right, so we own six trucks, and it's just a small trucking business. Don't plan on growing anymore. The problem that I'm having now is I have nowhere to park trucks. And my trucks are parked at Petro right now, and they're getting towed every other day.
Let me, let me ask you some questions. So is the truck parking, you're going to bring him in at night, take him out in the morning, or you're going to have continuous traffic?
It's my trucks, six. I'll be bringing them out first thing in the morning, six o'clock in the morning. They be in approximately seven o'clock in the evening.
All right.
It's not twenty-four hours.
Let's talk about the hours that you just said. How about safety? Is there something that, that's going to pose harm to the neighbors here?
Well, I do plan on putting a privacy fence up all the way around the property.
Okay.
Security.
Secure defense?
Yes.
All right.
But eight-foot fence, though. I told the fence you planned to put up.
Well, no, he, he has, he doesn't have a say. What, what, what is he required to do?
So along the northern property line that a butts, yeah, there you go, Lena. Right there, he would have to put in eight foot. Everywhere else, he could put in whatever he would like. But because it, the other sides abut industrial zoning districts.
All right. Does he have to have landscaping?
He would for a parking lot, yes. But that would be towards Erie Street.
All right. Do you understand that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to add the condition on, on the fence and the landscape.
Well, that would already, that's already required by ordinance, so we don't need to condition that.
Fantastic. Okay.
Fence is already in it, too?
It would be.
Okay.
All right. Well, that's great. Thank you. You're going to be a good neighbor.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Demi might want to clarify for the commission that the, the fencing requirement for each side, based on the difference in the zoning. So if they wanted to make it continuous all the way around, they can make it that a condition of their motion.
Sure. So to the north, along, yep, along that property line, that's where it's required by ordinance to install an eight-foot wood or masonry fence with a ten-foot landscaping buffer right there. To the east. Other way. Yep. To the east, that one, that area, they don't have to technically because it's abutting an industrial zoning district. Same to the south, and also to the west. However, along that western line, they will have to install a, a six-foot-wide landscaping buffer to screen the parking.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? We're going to close the public hearing, and we heard from the applicant. We also heard from the neighbors. And the applicant does understand the fencing requirements. He did tell us his hours. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was making sure that the commission was aware of the fencing because she said that would be included by ordinance. But Commissioner Linton had asked about the fence on the other side, property side, so I did want to make sure that the, the motion was for the staff report, not anything additional, because that was not a part of the motion.
The fencing is everywhere that they abuts the residential.
I think she clarified that point. So it, it didn't have to be a, a condition, because I think.
So it, it, it only has to be conditioned if you wanted it in places that wasn't required by ordinance, which is why she, we went around. So I didn't know if that clarified it for you, because I didn't hear that in your motion, but if you're fine with it.
All right. Thank you. With that said, you, we have the motion, we have the second. Did we vote?
We did vote.
All right. Well, good luck, sir. Let's go to PZ two zero two five one eighty-two. Tonight's going to be a four-drinks night.
Dustin Byerly is requesting a specific use permit to allow a truck parking and storage facility at forty-ten Fennett Road. A storage use, use requires a specific use permit within the GCMD zoning district, which is why it's before y'all today. This property was recently subdivided and previously operated as a vehicle storage facility for towed cars. The development of the site as a truck parking and storage site would be consistent with existing development. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, any construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow and pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, any construction plan shall comply with all applicable fire and building codes. Number three, any installed lighting shall be diverted from residential uses to the north and the east. And number four, the development shall be in constrict, shall be in strict compliance with the city of Beaumont's landscaping and screening requirements. Staff sent twelve property owner notices, and we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area where they wish to have the facility. This is an aerial image. This is the subject property. To the west. East. And south. And I do believe we have the applicant present. I'm sorry. I don't think that, oh, here he is.
Mr. Byerly? Good afternoon, sir. How are you? Would you state your name and address for the record and give us any additional information you might have?
Dustin Byerly, forty-ten Fennett Road. I'm actually just trying to put water on the property right now, and I got y'all.
I'm sorry, you're trying to do what?
Actually just trying to put water on the property at the moment. I'm not actually ready to do any type of structure to the property at the moment. I just needed water and electricity at the moment.
All right, but if you do, do you understand the conditions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions for the gentleman? Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like?
I have one question. I'm sorry, Mr. Byerly. What kind of trucks are you going to be storing on there? Is it going to be like more than two axles?
Please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Would that make a difference?
How many trucks?
I don't know. I, I, I would, I wouldn't know right now. Currently, I'm just trying to grow, but I, I don't have a current answer for you.
Okay. Well, and the reason I'm asking, if you go back to the aerial, the reason I'm asking is that it looks like this is undeveloped. Can?
I'm going to lay down rocks.
Rocks?
Yes, ma'am, rocks, limestone, bays, rocks.
Okay, okay.
And there's no existing drive, is it?
Yes, I got one right there with it, right there. It's like a thirty feet wide. And I got, you can see right in the back, I already started putting rocks right there.
All right.
Okay. We'll just need to make sure that we have permits on file for grading and whatnot. We'll give you a call for that. One of the reasons I was asking, if you go back to the aerial image, it looked undeveloped in our ordinances. I think the cap is, I don't want to lie to you, but I think it's, it's ten vehicles that are over two axles, require a specific use permit. So I wanted to make sure that there's not, and that's on undeveloped property. I wanted to make sure that that wasn't a factor here, because if it were, then I would suggest that we table it. However, it looks like he's improving it, or you have intentions to improve it. We just need to get those permits.
Yes, I was kind of scared to keep developing the property knowing y'all might say no.
Yeah, we definitely, well, and we'll get the, we'll work with you to get those permits.
How many trucks did you say? Ten?
I think it's ten. Do you recall?
Do you intend to have more than ten right now?
God bless. Yes, if it happens, yes. But I only have four right now.
But you're going to have to come back for a specific use permit.
Yes, I understand.
So if it were, if it were more than ten vehicles on undeveloped property in GCMD, which that's this zoning district, it would require a specific use permit. So I wanted to make sure that we're not having to bring him back and pay two separate fees and whatnot. It's all covered in one. However, he should be okay. We just got to get these permits on file.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this? Fantastic. We close the public hearing. We heard from the staff and also the applicant. He does understand the conditions when he gets to that point. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval with four conditions.
We have a move, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Let's go to PZ two zero two five one eight five.
ARA Buyers is requesting approval of a specific use permit to allow a duplex at thirty-eight ninety Harding Drive. The purpose of the request is to bring the existing duplex into compliance with our adopted ordinances. When the, when purchasing the property, it was noticed that the use of the duplex is non-compliant with existing zoning codes as it does not have an approved specific use permit. So to become compliant, they are retroactively seeking a specific use permit for the existing duplex. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following condition. Construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Staff did send twenty-five property owner notices. We received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is the area under review. This is the aerial image. Subject property. Northwest, property southeast, to the south. And I believe that we have his partner, Ron McCrory, here to speak on, on behalf of the case.
Great. Hello? Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ron McCrory, three eight nine zero Harding.
All right, sir. Tell me what happened here.
So me and two of my friends purchased our first investment property right here. Bought it, just kind of fixed it up, painted the outside. We now have two tenants in there. Bought it on a hard money loan, tried to refinance, find out that we couldn't refinance it because it's classified as a single-family home. Bought it as a duplex, and so we're just trying to change it to a duplex so we can get out of this hard money loan and.
When you bought it, it was a duplex, huh?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Well. Okay, you do understand the, the condition that the city is asking?
To make sure things are updated, I believe you were saying?
Yeah, and then for, for you to get your permit and all that, to have the water utility and all that good stuff complied with.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
I, I, I may need a little bit of direction on how to do that, but.
That's fine. When, when you get with, with Demi, she'll help you. Any questions for the gentleman? Great. Thank you very much, sir. Good luck to you. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None. All right, perfect. We're going to close the public hearing. Oh, we heard from the applicant and also the, the staff. He bought the property. It, it was turned into a duplex before, so he does understand the condition that the city is asking. With that, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, let's get to the fun part. We have PZ two zero two five one eighty-five.
Shanna and Jeremy Hawa are seeking approval for a specific use permit to allow a drinking place to be located at three oh four Orleans. The proposed speakeasy is a concept designed to deliver an intimate and immersive nightlife experience inspired by elegance of the nineteen twenties. The establishment will feature high-end craft cocktails and live jazz performances in a hidden setting. Planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for the water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. Number two, shall install a security camera system or employ security patrols during peak operational hours. And number three, the establishment and property premises shall remain in compliance with the building code, fire code, zoning code, offenses and nuisance code, health and sanitation code, and any other applicable codes of the city. Staff sent fourteen property owner notices. We received one in favor and one in opposition. Opposition expressed concerns of a bar and crime surrounding, uh, what comes with a bar. On the area, or I'm sorry, on the screen, the area outlined in red is the area under review. This is in downtown. This is the aerial image. This is the subject property. To the west, properties to the east, and to the north. And I believe we have the property owner, um, present.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Tyler Wharton at twenty-four sixty-seven Calder.
All right. Tell me about this property and what they're going to do.
Uh, well, tenant couldn't make it, um, but they've got a great idea. Um, light music, snacks, wine, cocktail, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, kind of light, uh, nothing crazy. They're looking for a place to kind of have an intimate setting. Something we seem like we're lacking a little in this area.
Mm-hmm.
But they've got a great idea. Uh, they're, they're, I've known them for a while and, and as far as crime and things like that, I wouldn't allow something like that in my property. And I specifically put things like that in the lease to prevent problems. Do the liability.
This Shanna and Jeremy Howard, have they had a place like this? Are they experienced in running a bar?
No, they don't have any experience running a bar. They don't have a bar, so. But that's about it. Uh, but they are very professional. He's a professor at Lamar and, uh, they have a film production company, local, and, um, very, very stand-up legitimate people.
Yeah, but owning the bar is different, isn't it? I'll go with it.
Yeah, I, I had quite a few people interested. Um, after interviewing all three that were interested, we had nightclubs, we had other things. I went with what I thought was, in my opinion, the best people for something like this. It is a liability I take on. We've had instances in town. And I don't want to, I want to avoid that. Um, so I've checked them out pretty well. We've had really good conversations about this sort of thing. This is a place I hope to have a drink at as well.
Well, I'm glad you're conscientious about that. Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? We're going to close the public hearing. Uh, we heard from the property owner and also the staff. And, uh, there are three conditions that they have to abide by. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with three conditions and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Guys, just stay with me. We're getting there. PZ two zero two five one nine zero.
Matthew and Kimberly Moyle are seeking approval of a specific use permit to allow an eating place to be located at twenty ninety Broadway. The proposed Moyle Manor is a concept designed around traditional southern afternoon tea. The proposed tea room will boast traditional southern hospitality with baked goods, tea sandwiches, and carefully selected teas. In addition, the Moyles will maintain their residency on the upper floor of the historically preserved and restored home. Parking is provided directly across the street in an existing parking lot. This is a great example of adapted reuse to a historic structure. Planning staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pre-treatment and/or fog program. And number two, the establishment and property premises shall be in compliance with the building code, fire code, zoning code, offenses and nuisance code, health and sanitation code, and all other applicable codes of the city. Uh, notices were mailed to seventeen property owner notices, or I'm sorry, seventeen property owners. Uh, we received zero in favor and zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial image. This is the subject property. And this is the parking lot that was discussed and also south, to the north, to the east, and further south. I'm sorry, and also west. And I believe we have the applicants present.
Great. All right. Good afternoon, folks. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Matthew and Kimberly Moyle, twenty ninety Broadway Street.
So tell me, why in the world do you own a bunch of strangers in your house?
Um, we've been in hospitality for, well, combined almost sixty years together. Um, so we've been involved in, uh, the hospitality side of it. The, she's a thirty-year, well, forty-year-old chef, or forty-year chef.
Let, let's say fifteen.
Okay, fifteen. And I've been drunk or banquet. So, uh, we've done this, uh, the majority of our adult lives. As far as the residents, it's, uh, nice for us to be able to live there and operate there, as well as she's trying to slow down.
Well, it sounds like a great idea. Go ahead, please.
I was trying to retire, but this is what my retirement project is. I'm not slowing down much, but it's fun.
You are the boss though, right?
Correct.
All right. You do understand the two conditions?
Yes, we do.
All right. Any questions for the folks? It's a great concept. Thank you. Good luck to you.
We're excited.
Fantastic. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? If you do, they won't serve you tea. All right. We're going to close the public hearing and, uh, we heard from the staff and also the applicant, and they do understand the conditions. With that, I would ask for a motion.
Move we approve.
Second.
Who's second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. And we are going to get to the last piece. Thank you for your patience. Uh, before we get started, I need to disclose to you that I do own Sigma Engineers, which is an almost next-door neighbor to this property. I would manage the ongoing discussion here, but I would refrain from voting on the matter. With that, we're going to get started. PZ two zero two five two one seven.
Uh, real quick before we start, it looks like Mr. Beatty might have stepped out. So Mr. Sorrell, if you could, um, step in for quorum for planning commission. Okay. In April of two thousand and seven, the city council approved a specific use permit allowing a charter school to operate at forty fifty-five Calder. In June two thousand and nine, the S U P was amended and improved and approved to expand the school to occupy the building to the west within the parking lot. In that two thousand and nine proposal, a total population on campus would be three hundred and fifty students with three, thirty-five teachers on site. Over time, the school's enrollment significantly increased without the benefit of an approved amendment to their specific use permit. According to the National Center for Education Statistics, it was reported that a total of six hundred and fifty-seven students attended Harmony Science Academy at forty fifty-five Calder location for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year. At present, the campus no longer complies with the key conditions of the specific use permit. The increase in student enrollment has resulted in the site's inability to adequately manage vehicular traffic without adversely affecting public safety, pedestrian access, and neighboring properties. During school hours, traffic congestion at peak times is significantly impedes access to adjacent businesses, residential streets, and hinders the movement of emergency response vehicles in the area. Section twenty-eight point zero four point zero zero one, Part H of the cities, of the city's Code of Ordinances states, "A specific use permit may be revoked or modified after notice and hearing for either of the following reasons: One, it was obtained or extended by fraud or deception; or, number two, one or more of the conditions of the permit have not been met or have been violated." Last Thursday on the seventeenth, staff received a traffic mitigation and public safety response plan from the administration of the Harmony School System. It is labeled Exhibit A, and you should have, have had it at your seat when you arrived. Represent, representation for Harmony is here to explain the plan in full as well. Um, we sent thirty-seven property owner notices and we received one in favor and one in opposition, neither stating anything. Um, the area outlined in red is the area under review. Again, for revocation or modification of the existing.
Excuse me.
This is the aerial image. This is the subject property. Properties to the west, properties to the east, the north, and to the south. And again, Harmony's administration is here.
All right. Who is from the owner's side? Good afternoon, folks. Would you please state your name and address and tell me what you do?
Yes, my name is Michael Bender. My address is six hundred Travis Street, Suite forty-two hundred, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero zero two. I'm an attorney and I work for Harmony Public Schools in all aspects of their operations, from development, financing, and real estate purchases and sales.
Right.
Hi, my name is Niad Bayhan. I am the Deputy Superintendent of Harmony Public Schools. My address is nine three two one West Sam Houston, Houston, Texas.
And I'm sorry, what is your position?
Deputy Superintendent of Harmony Public Schools.
Okay, so are you local here?
No.
Anybody with your local schools here?
Yes, we have the principal.
Okay, all right, good, good. Okay, please, go ahead, guess.
Yeah, I mean, no, nothing more to really add. Um, I can go through the traffic mitigation plan, um, at length if you'd like me to, answer any questions y'all have on any of the options that we provided in there. Um, but also just want to highlight the fact that, that we are here to work with the city, to work with the neighboring landowners and business owners to try and find a solution to these traffic issues that have, um, kind of ramped up here in the last, uh, last few years. And so, um, we spent the majority of the last week and a half, um, two weeks kind of going through options, feasibility, uh, feasibility studies and brainstorming ideas. Have worked with, with city staff, um, over the course of that week and a half, two weeks. I think we have some really good and valuable and viable solutions, um, to the traffic issues. Some that can be implemented immediately as of the first day of school, August twelfth, uh, next month, and some that may take a little bit longer, but, um, ultimately will be more permanent and, and I think more useful for the community, um, and the neighboring landowners and business owners as well. Um, but happy to go through any of the options if you'd like. Um, but I know we are the last item on the, on a long agenda for you guys, so here to answer any questions y'all have.
How's your parking? Do you have enough parking?
We have enough parking.
Uh-uh.
I, I believe we have enough parking for our staff, yes. Um, this is an elementary school, so none of the students drive. So that's not really an issue, uh, for, for those students.
I think if you could go through the response plan that you gave staff, I think that would, that, good.
Okay. Um, so I'll, I'll start with an option that we've already implemented that we hoped would be a stronger result, but didn't end up turning out to be as good as we hoped, which was shuttling siblings from the elementary campus to the new high school campus, um, to kind of alleviate some of that congestion. We started that in April of twenty twenty-five. Didn't see the best results, um, and, and now we are here with, with some new additional solutions that we've kind of put in place. The first most immediate one is, uh, direct busing. We've secured a, a contract with a busing company here in, we would work with them across the state, but in, for this Beaumont campus, and we expect to have between two hundred and fifty and three hundred students, um, bus directly to their home, to the campus, and, and vice versa. Um, that will significantly reduce the amount of students coming to campus, uh, via car over their parents. And so what we hope that does is drop the number from, uh, six hundred and fifty students getting dropped off to three hundred and fifty students getting dropped off, just with that one solution, um, that, that is in process and finalized right now. Uh, we're working on bus routes with the company and kind of going through next steps with them in terms of, uh, capacity. In addition to, in addition to the direct-to-school busing, um, we've entered into a contract with, uh, a company called First Responder Protective Services. Uh, they're basically a staffing, um, agency or coordination company for off-duty, off-duty, active-duty police officers. So, um, police officers from, you know, local jurisdictions, surrounding jurisdictions who are working off-duty, uh, jobs to help with traffic coordination. And that can come in the form of helping parents move through the parking lot more smoothly or, um, reminding some of the parents that they cannot park on Calder, Fielan. I think it's West Twenty-third on, on the, uh, other border, um, where there's some backup. And so we're hoping that having some uniformed, although off-duty, uniformed police officers in place, um, will definitely help with the enforcement of, of kind of keeping those cars from queuing on, on public roads. Uh, as part of our meetings with city staff, uh, last week, we, um, we also, the assistant police chief, uh, was included in those meetings and we've kind of worked with him on, on kind of an action plan. You know, maybe the first couple of days of school, um, having some active-duty officers out there, writing tickets for people parking on a public road. Um, and again, we, we want to be clear. We are going to make that message clear to our parents that that is not something that, that we can do. We're going to, you know, take every effort we can to put that in policy, put that in procedure, and notify these parents that they cannot do that. Um, and if they do, they're subject to, uh, tickets violations with the school and, and with the city of Beaumont. In addition to kind of those options, some other immediate options we have in place are, uh, extended, I'm going to call them extended study hall hours. Making those options available to more than a hundred students between study hall, between after, uh, school activities, between clubs on certain days of the week will also significantly reduce, um, the amount of kids that are being let out and dismissed at three o'clock on a, on a Tuesday or three o'clock on a Thursday. And, and we're hoping that combining those kind of club, um, involvement, after-school activities and, and study hall, uh, will be somewhat of a quote-unquote staggered dismissal, although not, you know, as official as having different times being dismissed along the way. Um, it will give students the opportunity to kind of stay a little bit later, do their homework on campus, and then get picked up at three thirty or four. Um, and so adding those students into the pool of students being bused will also reduce the number of kids that are being picked up by their parents at three o'clock, um, and, and avoiding staging issues. We've also looked into a couple of different, uh, kind of pilot programs to be put in place this year. We're hoping to get them in place by August twelfth, but, um, that's the goal at least. One of them is a carpool program, um, which is sent to all families and parents of students in the school. And it basically is a way to connect parents to other parents that have kids in, at, at Harmony, um, so they can reduce their traffic. Uh, Dr. Bayhan was just telling me today, he, uh, he, he uses the carpool program, uh, with a neighbor and, you know, the neighbor picks up in the morning and Dr. Bayhan picks up in the afternoon or vice versa. So right there, you have two cars dropped down to one car for two kids and, you know, multiply that over, over ten, fifteen, twenty, hopefully fifty parents, um, and you start to see a significant reduction in, in car volume and, uh, and pickup and drop-off times, um, around the area. Another kind of interesting one that we've looked at is a, is a GPS triggered, kind of geofence is the best way to put it, um, where Harmony staff, uh, can set a border around the campus and, um, and basically get notifications when a parent arrives into, into that geofence. And so they can more quickly have that student ready for dismissal to load into the car. That is early, early stages, so I'm making no promises on that one. But, um, it is a, definitely a unique and, and very interesting option that I didn't know existed. Um, and so we're kind of working through kind of some other, uh, unique solutions here just to work with the city and the neighboring landowners. Uh, lastly is, is one that may be a more permanent solution, but would also take a little bit more lead time. And that is property purchases in the area. Um, we've already identified a few different sites, uh, in the surrounding area near the school. Um, these can operate either as staging areas for parents. So instead of having, you know, a hundred cars show up at dismissal time, they can show up to a designated parking lot with a controlled exit from that parking lot. And all of those options would be, you know, worked on with the city, with city staff, um, and, and, and approved by them before kind of putting anything into place. And, um, you know, that's a more permanent solution, but also requires a little bit of work, uh, in terms of negotiating a purchase and sale agreement or a short-term lease or a long-term lease, um, kind of working through the financing of those options. Um, and, and we are kind of all, all eyes and all ears on this. And we are kind of all eyes and all ears on this issue. And, you know, as I stated at the start of this, at the start of this discussion, we want to work with the city. We love being in Beaumont. We love the families that attend our school, and we want to continue to do that for years to come. And so we've kind of put it out there and I don't know how much city staff wants to see us, but weekly, bi-weekly, monthly meetings, whatever it is that they want to make this problem go away, to find a solution that is, you know, workable for everybody, that's what we want to do and that's what we're committed to doing here today and for the next, you know, twelve months, ten years, for however long we're gonna be in this community.
All right, so let's, you have three items that you said. So for the sake of keeping up with the record, you asked for, you're gonna have busing. How many buses you're gonna provide?
Currently.
So this staff would know how to make a note.
Six buses.
Six buses.
It may be five, five or six. We're gonna see kind of the feedback we get from families.
Let's say it's five or six. And how many uniformed officers you're gonna hire?
I think the plan is to hire two uniformed officers. They may be split between the high school and the elementary school, but depending on need, we could increase it.
That's not a good answer. I mean, one, which, how many you gonna have for this campus?
At least one, and then we're gonna see where that goes. You know, if we need to expand that to two, three, four, we are, we want to be flexible with the city and kind of provide what y'all need and what we need on campus, but I think we're gonna start with one, maybe two at this campus.
Have you visited with the police department?
Yes.
All right, good. You have these notes, ma'am? All right. Now, any questions?
Yes. How many students are you expecting this year, this school year?
Six hundred seventy-five.
And I'm assuming that we have a flux from original permit? Is what we have, what original permit today?
The original permit was three hundred and fifty students with thirty-five teachers. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what I believe happened was over time, they increased enrollment, obviously. And then I believe it was two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four when they built their Harmony High School. So that split the student population. However, at the elementary school, instead of effectively splitting that population, they backfilled that population. And then that has further exacerbated the issues of traffic congestion in that area. Again, one of the main issues is the ability for emergency vehicles to flow through the streets and whatnot. And right now, some of those, to the north, some of those streets are being blocked or there's businesses that are being blocked. So if anyone had an emergency back there, there's a serious, there's significant issues. So we just, we need to come to a resolution where that is mitigated because that's a serious public safety concern.
Okay, and back to his question, what is gonna be implemented? You said some will be there next month and then some was to come later.
So the immediate ones to start on the first day will be the busing. We've already contracted with the company for that. The traffic coordinators, the off-duty police officers, we've already contracted with the company to provide that. And the third is the after-school, after-school activities. That includes clubs, club participation, that includes an extended study hall, and that includes a after-school tutoring service.
But those three will be?
On August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, and the rest you working on depending on?
Yeah, yeah, we're working on the other ones as quickly as possible. I mean, the goal would be to have some sort of significant movement yesterday, right? But sometimes landowners and sellers, they wanna, you know, talk through it, negotiate and, you know, see if there's a common ground they can find.
And I only think I would, and I'm not suggesting, it's a recommendation, is that I know that one police, because that's a highly traffic area. I think if you've gotten with the rest of, one, I don't think we'll never do for that area.
Actually, I am here to give you an assurance about addressing the traffic. So if we need five policemen over there, we will have five policemen for sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why didn't this be addressed, say, a year and a half ago? Two years ago, when this problem's been going on a lot longer than the last six months?
Actually, I really want to say sorry for that, but it came to my attention on February this month, this year, and we thought that busing from both campuses will address the issue. So I think, I mean, last year, when we moved our middle and high school students to the other location, I mean, it becomes much clearer. So sorry for that, but when it came to my attention, we jumped into the conversation and we offer busing by assuming it will ease the traffic, but we noticed that it is not. So we can clear the message, I mean, we can hear the message clearly, and we will fix it as soon as possible.
Okay, so basically, but you're in Houston.
Yeah.
The partners existed, but you haven't heard anything about it until February of this year?
Correct. Let me just give you brief information about Harmony. As Harmony, we have forty-five thousand students all around Texas. We are one of the largest charter operators. And because of the high demand, I mean, in just one day, we got twelve thousand applications. So we opened our new campus last year because of the high demand. So, but I mean, it's not an excuse. We definitely need to address the traffic issue. And we are all eyes and ears, so we want to make sure that we will address it, I mean, right away.
And if I could add, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Demi, I think briefed me or bring me up to date. Wasn't there some issue that came up previously that y'all reached out to Harmony and did not get a response from?
Yes, sir, we originally reached out and as early as I can find records, September of twenty twenty-four. Could be far earlier than then with other staff, but one that I'm aware of is September of twenty twenty-four, and then we didn't have any response. So we had to send the letters of basically, basically stating, you know, if you guys don't come, we may have to revoke or modify the SUP. And so from there, we were able to get to a conversation with these two gentlemen and hopefully we can come up with a plan.
So there's very little response until it got a little, okay. I wonder if there's room here, and I'm just gonna throw out an idea, that we go along with these ideas, but have some kind of comeback fairly soon, how is it working? If it's not working, then what do we do? Because quite frankly, historically, it doesn't sound real good about y'all standing on top of this traffic issue and then taking care of it at the time.
Yes, sir.
One hundred percent, and we've committed to work with Demi and her team on weekly meetings, have them out at pickup and drop-off to kind of see how some of these things are being implemented. And if they work, great, we'll keep doing them. And if they don't work, we'll hit the ground running with another solution, you know, as soon as we can, as soon as possible, the next day. So one hundred percent agree with that, and I think that is a prudent solution here on top of all of the kind of things that we're trying to implement on day one.
Okay, y'all are in Houston, though. Who do they work with here locally?
Our principal and region superintendent.
I'm sorry, who?
Our principal and regional superintendent.
But we will be at the top of this issue and definitely we will have a meeting with the city team in a regular basis until we resolve the issue, so we will not give up.
For the information, your information on the commission, you can put any kind of commission or any condition or timeline to check on the progress.
What would you suggest? Demi, would you have an idea on this?
I think we should definitely have monthly meetings, but also I would think to curb any issues, it obviously needs to happen over, for the kids, it needs to happen over periods where they're out of school and you guys can figure out certain accommodations. So I would suggest, in my opinion, and of course, it's just my opinion, it's up to the commission on whether they want that in the council. But if necessary, the administration should return to planning commission for a review of the SUP in February of twenty twenty-six at the latest, at the latest. And then you should put in some steps on, so they submitted a response plan. And I would love to, you know, if you guys would like, we can have staff come up and comment on what they think of the response plan. You know, such as Beaumont Police Department and also Public Works. But you should, we should implement this in whole as a condition, that this is implemented by X date. That's what I would suggest, and I did prepare some conditions in the event you guys are okay with this response plan.
You've mentioned the date of February twenty-sixth at the latest. What would you think be optimum?
I would think end of December, at least December or January, because you gotta start preparing whether it means you have to find a new location to perhaps build a school or retrofit an existing building for a school. That takes time, and you definitely want to have it done before the beginning of the next school year. Any kind of construction that may need to happen, such as like crosswalks across the street or sidewalks to connect for safe passage of the children, you just want to give yourself time. That was one of the reasons we've reached out last September was to try to get this hammered out before the new school year.
The only thing, excuse me, go ahead.
Mr. Javid had another question.
I do have a question. Why we can't put more kids on the buses because of the age or the parents don't participate in the buses? What seems to be a problem?
Actually, it's our game plan. Normally, our game plan, three hundred students, busing three hundred students will address the issue. So if it does not, we will put more students. If it does not, we will add more policemen. So if it does not, we will purchase the, I mean, land. So we have multi-layered solutions. So I really want to give you an assurance, one way or other way we will solve it. And yes, we, I mean, we didn't do it on time, so that's why I want to really say sorry one more time, but we will fix it as soon as possible.
I do want to say one, I'm sorry.
Are you done?
No, no, I just want to make a comment, though. And I have a lot of my family members and their kids go to Harmony. And sometimes, you know, they call me and say, can you get more kids into those schools? But you guys have a system, and kids that come in, they're very happy. But the parents, if you have a policies, put your policies in place going forward, like next year, that make sure, you let them know that that's the only option that you left with if they wanted to have this school in this place, put them on the buses, and they will be gladly happy to do that and work with you guys.
Absolutely. One of the policy will be, if you block the road, we will withdraw your child. So we will assure you that, I mean, safety is first. I mean, there's no negotiation over there, but we will make sure that everybody is safe and we will provide the best education. But, I mean, in the past, we couldn't do it, so sorry for that.
Thank you.
Your turn.
The, I want to go back to this timing as far as looking at this. End of December, you've got the Christmas, New Year's holidays there, and obviously Thanksgiving just before that. Trying to look at, ask about mechanics and getting it done or how, what would be, what's your thoughts on this? I think, and I'm asking you because I think you're working pretty close with this.
So if everyone is amenable to the traffic plan that they just presented, and I think we should definitely hear from PD and also Public Works on their opinion of it as well. But if we're amenable to it, I've drafted potential conditions for it. And that would be, number one, shall implement steps one through three of the Traffic Mitigation and Public Safety Response Plan, which is attached as Exhibit A by August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, which is what they communicated that they would do. And number two, by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, shall implement the measures outlined in Step Three, Part Four, and Step Four of the Mitigation and Public Safety Response Plan, again, as attached as Exhibit A, subject to review and approval of the city's traffic engineer. That way, it gives some room, if they need to scale up, they can. If they need to, if there's room to scale back, they can, but it needs to be approved by the city. And number three, if necessary, the administration of Harmony Science Academy shall return to the planning commission for review of the amended specific use permit to ensure all conditions have been met and that safety issues have been resolved by no later than February of twenty twenty-six. And number four, because this is relevant to the request to amend, total enrollment shall not exceed six hundred and seventy-five students and sixty-five teachers. But again, I definitely recommend that we hear from the guys that have boots on the ground and are out there trying to mitigate these issues.
Are you okay with the date or?
Sure, for the time.
And you?
What's your hours there? The time being in school, what time does school starting, what time does it dismiss?
Three P M.
We take in at seven forty for the students. The student time is from seven forty to thirteen.
If you would please come up here and state your name and address with the record so we can recognize.
My name is Melissa Vines. I live at two seventy Talport Trail in Lumberton. Our school hours currently and how it's scheduled now, provided all this works through, is from seven forty in the morning to three eighteen. I'm currently opening the campus at six forty-five in the morning for the students to come in and the families could drop them off, which is why we haven't been experiencing a large problem with the traffic in the morning. And in the afternoon, our regular dismissal is three eighteen, but then our clubs dismiss at four thirty and our tutorials dismiss at four o'clock. So that's our operating hours.
So how about dismissing so many grades at a time? Like first and second grade goes out at one time, third, you know.
So we.
Have you ever come up with a plan on that?
Yes, sir, we have, and we haven't pushed that completely to the side. The problem with that is we're also trying, first of all, we have siblings. So when we dismiss one child, we have to dismiss the other, you know, if they're family, to keep the parents from coming more than once. And also, that would push our time further out throughout the day, and then where are all of our parents gonna go? But that has not, that is something that we did talk about, but currently, right now, I think that's just on the back burner because it's not gonna make as big a difference as the buses system is right now.
Add one more thing. Some of those after-school activities i- is the mechanism that we are kind of looking at as a quote-unquote staggered dismissal. And so instead of, you know, splitting up a first-grade brother and a fourth-grade sister, if both of them want to go to a study hall, if their parents want both of them to go to a study hall after, you're then getting them dismissed thirty minutes later or an hour later than the rest of the group. So instead of staggering dismissal by first and second grades, we're staggering dismissal by after-school activities, club options, tutoring options, and things of that nature. So again, we submitted this plan to Demi and her team last week with the hope that we'd have updates for you today. And that's one of the things that we are working through still, you know, every day since then. So I hope that answers, answers your question.
Demi, your note shows that you're gonna have by February, whatever date was, you're looking for results, right?
Well, far be, far before then.
Yes.
But if there's, if there's no improvement, then this needs to be reviewed again in February of twenty twenty-six in preparation of the upcoming summer session.
I have one question.
In addition, you did say that you will be meeting with them weekly and monthly.
That's something we've already.
Okay.
I have one question for you on the conditions. If some of these turn out to be, you know, not even close to viable, kind of how should we address that with you, the team, and the commission?
The bottom line is a result.
Perfect, yeah.
If you don't achieve your result.
I'm good with that.
Everything's gone.
Go with that.
All right, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask the police chief or some of his people to come in, and then we'll get back to you. You guys don't have any more questions for the gentleman, right? All right.
Thank you.
Chief, good afternoon. What complaints are you hearing and what do you think the solution would be?
Well, for the most part, I asked Assistant Chief Jason Plunkett to come up here because he's dealing with operational focus of this and he's been dealing with it for a number of years. As the attorney said, this is not a new issue. And we get, it's sort of amazing to me that so few people responded to the official survey because we get weekly, very disgruntled residents, business owners, customers, to all this. because we get weekly, very disgruntled residents, business owners, customers to all this traffic issue. And it's been going on for a long time and we gave very definitive recommendations over a year ago to help with the traffic problem. They weren't implemented. So here we are yet another year. We got both public safety issues and impacts on businesses and we're going into another year with some potential plans. So it's, it's very concerning, but I'd like Chief Plunkett to go over some of the details.
Would, would the Assistant Chief knows the detail of what you guys have recommended?
Yes, sir. So.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Jason Plunkett. I'm the Assistant Chief of, Assistant Chief of Police, the Beaumont Police Department, 255 College.
Thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, sir. So just a couple of notes. Again, this has been going on for, this precedes this previous school years, everyone knows. But when the, when the enrollment expanded at the school, obviously the problems got worse. So just as an example, between the end of August to through about the first or second week of October last year, our traffic unit had to spend 190 man-hours in the morning and in the evening trying to help with this stuff. And, you know, we, I think with engineering, with the city engineering, what is going on now is the best that it can be with what we have. If it's just parent pickup, that's it. But in the meeting that we had last week with Harmony, I expressed that if they do the busing, that's great. But if they're only expecting 50%, that really needs to be in conjunction and what we've pushed is an alternate location, drop-off and pickup, whether it's feeling and installing crosswalks or whatever. But the, the busing is not going, I can tell you right now, it's not going to really, because you're going to have the buses there as well as the parents. So we're not really confident that that's the best way to go. As far as secondary employment, something that I've expressed to them is it's, we can't make officers work secondary employment. That's, they're private contractors, they, they can do that or not. And filling a job, to have an officer or two officers, which I believe we would require a minimum of two, to have the, fill those positions at two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon is very difficult. Officers just aren't going to jump on that type of, of employment. So we cannot, while we can encourage it and, and support them in their endeavor, we can't make officers do that. And, and they've requested that before and we've not been able to, to fill that before. Yes, we will be there if as available to assist the first, first few days. I, I don't want to look at it as an enforcement issue because I'd like for the commission to understand the position that it puts the officers in. Parents have to be able to pick up their children. Parents didn't ask for this, but then certainly neither did the residents who can't receive emergency services if they need it, nor did the businesses that are being negatively impacted in the area. So the police are in the middle. It's, it's really hard to go out and, and write a parent a ticket for blocking a turn lane when that's the only place that they have to be. So what we've ended up having to do is try to mitigate as much as possible the impact. Bottom line is, it's too many cars in too small of a place at one time. So again, even if, even if you did approve the busing as, as a, as a necessity to amend the, the S U P, we still need to have an alternate plan for pickup. The busing is not going to solve the problem. And, you know, we've made proposals, that, that's been a longstanding proposal of ours back to the first of, of the year. Engineering has, our engineering has looked at this. We've tried every way we can to, to queue the cars up. There's just, there's just nowhere to put them. It's, it's too many people. Even when enrollment was at 350, it was a problem. That problem was barely manageable. We still got complaints then, but since the enrollment doubled, it's, it's just, it's not workable as it is. From a police perspective, I know Chief White is here. If you want to talk to him about the negative impact, if we needed to get an ambulance somewhere, if we needed to get a fire truck somewhere, there's, you just can't. So all of these neighborhoods across Calder, I'm sorry, yeah, across Calder, they're blocked in, they have a hard time getting in and out. So again, it puts the police department in the middle of really an untenable situation for both the parents and the residents and business owners. If you have specific questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. Yes, sir.
Did you say y'all, or, excuse me, already recommended a alternate pickup?
The police department has recommended that, that they see.
And what response did you get to that?
Well, we got in the last, finally in the last meeting that we had, we had some commitment that they're trying to obtain property, but here we are now, we're almost at school start time. And it's, you know, we're, we're past time to have done this already. And we, we don't have a firm commitment, I don't believe is, I don't think we can say we have a firm commitment. I think they're still attempting to secure that feeling property.
Well, it appears as, as a referee in here, it appears that the solutions that they're proposing are not going to work.
I think that implementing the solutions that they have proposed at this point, if they can get alternative, alternative drop-off and pickup, that, that may do it. It's not going to be perfect. It's just a bad location for this many people. But I don't, I don't, this is me, I don't believe that, that busing at most half of your student population at the same time the parents are picking up is a solution by itself.
Chief White, you look like you want to say something. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Earl White, 400 Walnut. I've received not only in Fire Marshal's office, but in my office complaints as to the traffic. If you look at it, it's a very small area and you may have noticed that my fire trucks are pretty large. And not only for fire, but for medical emergencies also. So that's been our concern. We've communicated with Demi, with the police department, with Molly on our concern. I'm in agreement with Chief Plunkett's assessment that off-site would probably be a more viable solution when it comes to emergency response to that location.
Demi, what is your opinion?
Uh, my opinion is, my opinion is I wish that they would, that we would have been having this conversation well before July. However, they submitted a response plan. They, it can't be, we're going to do this or only, and only this and maybe not that or it, it needs to be cohesive and it needs to be comprehensive. And what they submitted to us, if they do all of those things, it may mitigate it. But the biggest thing is that this needs to come back for review because if this is too many kids in one spot and this is, and it's, the traffic congestion's not going to, the traffic congestion's not going to fix itself or relieve itself, then, then we're going to have to look at some alternate options. And if they need a larger campus, that's something, you know, we've talked about that in our last meeting together, that's something that they need to start looking at. So it, it can't be, you know, we're just going to do busing, we're just going to do this. It's got to be all, all of it, in my opinion, including the GPS coordination.
All right, go ahead.
What about, what about, it looks like we have no solution really. We have a lot of proposals, some of which, a lot of which agree, then the parent, apparently it's not going to work or may not. Why not readdress this in three months? There's no way to holidays and everything else. I mean, we, you're going to be able to tell in three months whether this proposal is working or not working.
Counselor, can I propose for the table this and then have all parties go together and come back in three months?
Not you, you're accused, remember?
I can.
I'm trying to help.
And real quick, I do want to, I do want to, so Elena normally has every Planning Commission meeting off, off the top of her head, but August 12th is when the school starts. That, that's happening. So we, they wouldn't come back for Planning Commission until third week of August. So school will have started by then. So it's just something to keep in mind that we will do whatever this commission says to do, but that's just something to keep in mind.
Can they move forward and still come back to the next meeting?
Can we move forward with some of these options and still come back?
Anything you can do.
Yeah.
But I mean, as far as actually formally coming to a conclusion right now, there's.
Absolutely. And, and I apologize if, you know, talking about the properties was, was a bit vague. It's just, they're not, I, I don't want to negotiate against ourselves on pieces of property, you know, and, and I hope you understand that. But we had productive efforts today. We came in this morning and toured, toured a property, looked at a few other properties. And, and I'm, I'm confident that we can secure a solution for that very, very quickly. And we're going to do our best, like Dr. Bion said, if it takes 10 buses to bus 600 kids, we're going to figure out a way to get it to where y'all are happy and, and Demi and her team are happy and we can continue, you know.
Or you might be able to secure off, maybe at least temporarily something to get it off.
Absolutely.
And then revisit this next meeting.
That, that is.
And see what's working.
Yes, our plan is a short-term lease right now before August 12th with a, with an option to purchase it once we go through diligence and make sure that it's not, you know, on underground storage.
Offsite parking.
Yeah.
Drop off for them.
Yeah, to queue, to queuing staging areas are, is the best way we can describe it.
All right, let's, let's keep on going. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask for public comments in here and then we'll come back to you folks. We're going to open the public comments. Who wants to start? Mr. Perigi, go ahead. And then the gentleman in the back.
Saint Perigi, 445 North 14th Street, Beaumont. I've been listening to this conversation for some time. I go through it, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I'm a little concerned about, and I have to step on my own toes, I'm a little concerned that this issue they're having here is no different than the issue we have on, at Marshall. Unless the chief can tell me differently, we have the same issue at Marshall, not as bad because Marshall's a bigger school or Dallin Road's a bigger school and Gladys is a bigger, we have the same problem at St. Anne's. We have the same problem at the new school they just built behind the shopping center. Now, what, whatever we're going to do, we got to do it to fix all of them because there's a lot of grumpy people out there driving cars that are being held up because of this and changing lanes. And so we can talk about forcing them to do something now, but I'm not so sure, we need to come up with a solution that's going to cure a lot of these other areas that do have, Sally Curtis has got the same problem. Regina Howe, Regina Howe has the same problem. So how do we solve the problem? Part of the, part of the issue, it's not their fault. The fault is, is that when I was growing up, my parents said you either walk home or catch the bus or something like that. We didn't have, they didn't pick us up. Today, mamas like to pick up their children. I don't blame them. That's just the way we have evolved over the years, which consequently, so if you have 650 students there, you got an average of 350 families probably. And you got 350 cars standing out there. But that's across the board at every school that's out there. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Start the clock in the.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
I brought a little Google Maps.
All right, if you don't mind, state your name and address for the record and then we're going to start the timer. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, my name's Mark Faggard. My office is at 4320 Calder. My home is at 3715 Long. So I not only live in this neighborhood, but I also reside in this neighborhood. And I made some notes about some things I'd like to talk about with y'all about the entirety of the debacle of the traffic situation that has existed in our neighborhood and our business community along Calder since this school opened. As the, as the Beaumont Police Department officers here had testified, it was tolerable before. It is now intolerable and here's why. I'm probably going to need more than three minutes. The green, lime green is the outline of the problem there. The intersections that I'm talking about are circles in the dark green areas, okay? Here, here, here. The problem, and I, and I have elderly parents that live on the other side of Calder. My father's 96, my mother's 94 and you couldn't get to them if you wanted to while they're dropping off kids and picking up kids. At the intersection of Calder and 23rd, you cannot get in the turn lane. If you go south, you can't get in the turn lane to turn and go left on feeling and go east on feeling because when they come down feeling, coming to drop off kids and pick up kids, they immediately get in the left turn lane. So there's no access to the left turn lane at all on the intersection to 23rd and feeling. It's totally blocked, okay? The bigger problem is too, if you want to go, go south on 23rd Street while they, they're dropping off and picking up, you can't do that. If you want to turn, be west on Calder off 23rd Street, you can't do that. So it causes the backup in traffic two or three blocks down 23rd Street back to the north. And then the other big issue is, is that when on feeling, when the people come down feeling, what they do is they have two routing systems. They have a routing system for the, the pre-K and the one, first to second grade, and then they have another gate that where they, they come in and they drop off the third and fourth and fifth graders, okay? Well, what they do is when they come down Calder to drop and pick up their kids, they get in the left turn lane all the way back to the, what I used to call the, the pumpkin field is way back here, okay? So the left turn lane is completely occupied and they drive straight through the, wrongfully in the left turn lane, they just go straight across Calder, Calder 23rd and they go, so you can't go that way. And.
I'll make a motion to give the gentleman two more minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. The.
All right, go ahead.
The, so, and if you come down, if you come from Lucas and you have to turn, you come down feeling, you have to turn down feeling, they have the, the right lane completely blocked as they're turning on Lucas Executive Drive, completely blocked during these time periods. So you have to turn from the outside, inside lane of feeling onto Executive Drive and the, where you have to turn is the center lane and then you have the oncoming left turn lane and I've seen some near misses there, okay? Now, the biggest problem is, once you get on feeling, and you may have observed this, once you get on feeling, you have to, you, you have to drive to avoid the traffic that's blocking the right lane going back east. They park in the bicycle lane, which is illegal, but more importantly, they, they, they force the, the residents of this neighborhood and the business owners to, to drive illegally in the center turn lane. You see where I'm coming from? So it's, and it, you, you can't access this area when they're doing this. And I have several friends that I talked to and they cannot be here today, but they're, you know, BPD promised us they were going to have an officer out there, he shows up one time. I have, so you, and I forwarded it to the Beaumont Police Department today. I had photographs of this that I took on September the 16th. So this company was well aware there was an issue, okay? I took videos on November the 4th and again in November the 12th of 2024 showing these extremely dangerous traffic conditions. So it's a serious situation and you, there, what really gets me about this whole deal, and forgive my, my, it's been an angry situation for myself and everybody in the neighborhood. They knew there was a problem when they added all these extra students, but rather than coming to the city council and to y'all to get an amended permit to address these situations, they just said, let's play with it until we get caught. They got caught.
Thank you, Mr. Faggard.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this? All right, so, yes, sir, go ahead. If you would state your name and.
Yes, sir. Captain Hernandez, 705 Wade Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, sir. Captain Natus, seven oh five Wade Street, Beaumont, Texas. A lot of people in this room know me. I'm Carlitos. We're Carlitos Mexican Restaurant. Us and our family owns Carmelus. And we're right to the right of the school. And I'd like to give Ms. Bion her props for doing the right things with these kids and, you know, their academics and all that are well. But our first priority are the kids and the children. And we do have a serious traffic problem, very serious. And we, you know, see these kids. And it's just going to be a matter of time before something happens. And we get the traffic that comes through the back part of the restaurant to go to Sonic. And that bothers us because they're on our property. And we also have people that are picking up kids at the school that park in that parking lot, our parking lot, okay? And go out and try to talk to one of those people and tell them, look, you, you know, you have to move. And it's not because we're trying to be selfish about it or be ugly about it. We've always tried to be good neighbors. But when you go to approach a car and tell them, ma'am, you have to move, or sir, you have to move, and then they, you know, threaten you with violence, or, you know, kind of give us some sign language, but they don't understand that if we let one car pick up those kids there, then there's going to be multiple cars wanting to do the same thing, okay? So I'm in agreement with Beaumont PD, Earl, you know, and their staff. I mean, it is a serious, serious problem. And I would ask anybody that if you have the time to leave your house early and go down them streets, like Mr. Faggard has said, in the morning between seven-thirty, eight o'clock, and three o'clock, three-thirty, you'll understand the problems that we have. Our problem is, you have people coming out of the restaurant that can't get out of the restaurant, and vice versa, people trying to turn into the restaurant that can't get into the restaurant, okay? So again, I mean, that affects everybody, and it affects us. We want to do the right things. We want to see Harmony continue to do well. But honestly, I can tell you, you've outgrown your school. And that's a good thing. Now, I think the second question, you know, would be looking at like, our councilwoman in Ward Two is here. I just, there she is right there. Oh, Ward Three, okay, I'm sorry. Audwin, we have a school, M L King, down here on the avenues. Maybe they can look at that, of moving a school theirs. I don't know. But what's working, it's not going to work. This ain't rocket science. You can't double a school and faculty increase and think that it's going to get better. They hit it right on the head. When you bring buses, you're going to have the same problem. It might be a worse a problem. I understand what they're wanting to do, but it's just, in the end, it's not going to work. And we've been battling this issue. So, you know, we don't want to be, be turned enemies, but at the same time, we have a business that operates in the communities and people count on us, and, and we want to be supportive of that. So again, I'm saddened, but I just, they've outgrown the school. And now we start a new school year, and we're in the same mode again. Let's come back in three months. Let's come back next year. I mean, it's kind of like we kicking the can down the street. That's what I think. But, I mean, you know, I don't make those decisions. But I could tell you, it's just not going to work. And I, my apologies. I don't want to say that in an ugly way, but this, it's just not going to work out.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, so now, you heard the negatives, and you can respond.
I want to say one more time, sorry for that, but it will work. It will work in, I mean, anyway. Otherwise, we will move the school for sure. We will not kick the can. We will fix it in three months. If we cannot fix it, we will move the school to another place, for sure.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we'll close the public hearing. We heard from all the interested party, the police, the neighbors, and everybody else, so I entertain a motion. No, go, hold on, hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
Real quick, I do want to put it on the record that this property is before you guys because it has an S U P. It, the school came in post nineteen eighty-one. Nineteen eighty-one is when we adopted our zoning code. So that's why the specific use permit applies here. So I don't want it to seem as if it's a, you know, we're picking on just Harmony. It's just because the S U P applies here, and that's why it's before you guys at this commission.
Mr. Linton, do you have something?
Yes. For clarification of what we're going to be voting on, I want to understand that the S U P is actually to be modified, correct? And in that modification, we had conditions, even though it's not here, we added conditions on addition to this. I was trying to get a clarification on, right now, what's going to happen on August twelfth. That's definitely going to happen on August twelfth. That's going to be into the conditions. And I know there's other things that you said will come later. And with that, I want to address back sixty days down the road, we're probably too late, that that should be met within a shorter time period to make sure that it's being corrected. So that's all I have.
All right, now, hold on a minute. Go ahead. Everybody else had their comments? All right, thank you very much. I'm sorry, it's kind of trying, but I would entertain a motion. postponing it with them continuing with their work, right?
With their work. Commissioner Little, are you asking them to come back and present, like findings? Are you asking them to implement something specific on the plan, or are you asking them to continue to find additional solutions? I just wanted to be clear. Yes, I just wanted to be clear, when they come back, are they coming back to say, we implement? No, I'm asking, when they come back, are you, are you expecting them to come back and say, we've implemented these things and it's working, or we found a different solution to the problem?
She just said that.
Okay.
Just so you know.
My mind's a little simple.
Don't worry, it's usually him.
So you're looking for a solution in three months?
Right.
All right. So there is a motion here. We need to make this proper. There is a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Do you have a second? Is there any discussion? And you?
Discussion. So to make this clear, we are going to vote on this with the conditions. And you adding coming back in three months or we?
I believe Commissioner Little tabled, or recommended, made a motion to table for three months to come back and essentially see if their response plan has worked or is effective.
He's looking for a solution to see if it's working in three months.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
To clarify, are we not amending the S U P today? Is it a complete and full table? Yes, sir.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any in opposition? The ayes have it. Thank you. All right. Dear Mayor, I'm sorry that we have put you through this all day today, but be happy that you're going to let us go home. And who are you? We called you and you weren't here, sir. We already voted. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, you weren't here.
All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned.
May I, may I visit with you?
Yes.
I am with my engineers next door.
It's okay.
I'll tell you, next time I'm not going to sit here, I'm going to be.